Red light came on.
Very good. It's a good thing. Just don't fall off that table. Thank you, Dani. Okay, yeah. All right. Let's call the meeting to order, please. I invite those who are willing and able to stand for the pledge.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Taubert.
Maybe just a couple of things. We do have some guests with us tonight. Cliff Carmody from the Service Co-op is here. So our new business items eight-one and eight-two, we'd like to move up to following the consent agenda items. And we also have Ms. Brandt here for the FFA State Convention. So she would go after that. And then we wanted to move up the activity travel release policy discussion. Clay Anderson's here. And so we'll kind of take those three tiny things and then we'll go into our administrative reports.
All right. Any other discussion or thoughts or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the agenda with those moving the new business up signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number four, visitors? None. Thank you. Moving on to number five, the consent agenda, five-one through five-seven. Any items that any of you would like to have pulled out to discuss individually? Anyone? Nothing? All right. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, five-one through five-seven, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I did want to just add that we had an anonymous donation for tennis court shit. So that was a very nice contribution from a community member. So appreciate that.
That's awesome. Thank you. All right. Now we'll go to eight, new business eight point one. Hi, Cliff.
Hi.
Nice to see you.
Good to see you and thanks for having me.
Thanks for coming.
Is that mic on, Deb?
Mic up, Cliff.
Well, first of all, thanks for giving the opportunity to come and talk to the Pice Valley Board. Appreciate that. Appreciate Kevin reaching out and asking if I would come and talk a little bit about something that's near and dear to me, and I'll get to that. But before I do that, I want to talk just in general, a little bit about the co-op. If you look in the pack of information on the left-hand side, there's kind of a one-page sheet. I just draw your attention to that. This, many of you know about the co-op. This is the best summary that we have that talks about everything that the co-op is about. So on the front side, you see, we actually are serving 18 counties in southwest and west central Minnesota. We have what we call office sites where we do special education, and then we have learning center sites. I'm going to talk a little bit about the learning center sites in more detail here in just a minute. On the backside, you'll see a general summary of the programs and services that we have available to the membership. We have, I've been with the co-op now for almost 20 years. We continue to grow. We continue to partner with the membership. And when I use the term "membership," I'm talking about schools, which is our primary partnership. But we also provide some services to cities, counties, and we call other governmental entities. Sometimes you'll see the acronym CCOGAs, and that's what that stands for. We still, however, do a lot of special education. The fastest growing piece of collaboration we've been doing with the schools, however, is with what we call our educational learning centers. And so I want to talk very specifically about those and share with you some of the work that we've been doing around the learning centers. 2016, in the fall of 2016, we started on a facility study. It really started as a facility study, not so much a program review. And what we were looking at is, as we looked around the region, there were a couple of things that became very important to us. One was, we wanted to, where we could, we wanted to take multiple sites in multiple locations and try to move them into a single location. And then we were looking at the learning center. So when I talk about a learning center, Pipestone's a good example. We have a learning center. It's at the Technical School right now. It serves a number of students. The students that we serve in these programs in collaboration with our schools are students that have very high behavioral needs, autism. And as we started the facility study, we realized that although we had five programs around the region, they weren't all the same. And what I mean by that is, in 2016, we had an autism program that was in a little tiny town of Cosmos, Minnesota. Why Cosmos? All of these locations have stories. And so I'll tell you a little story about Cosmos. Cosmos, we started in Cosmos about 10 years ago, not quite 10 years ago, because there was a program in Glencoe that they wanted to stop administering. They asked if we would administer it for them. We said yes. That program had an autism program. We did it for, I think, one year in Glencoe. Then they asked us to find another location. And we found this little school of Cosmos where we're using one or two rooms. Over time, ACGC, that one of Cosmos Co. City, left that building, and we kind of moved in. And so we have close to 60 students there. It was the only program in 2016 where we had a program for kids with autism. And we were having students that were being transported between 70 and 80 miles one way to attend that program. Now, if you look at our region, you understand our region is very sparsely populated. Transporting students is a part of what we have to do. But quickly, we said, this makes no sense. It's not good for the kid to be on a bus being transported or on a van being transported that long. And so as a part of our facility study, one of the primary tenants that we came up with was we needed to do program expansion as well. So since 2016, we've been expanding programs. Our programs expand as quickly as we can add teachers and we can add square footage. Pipestone's another example that we added a classroom, and the students come. And we try to do that in a manageable way. But we've seen enrollment growth of 10 to 15 percent over the last three or four years each year. And all comes back to adding programs and adding space. So when we did the facility study, we identified some things that were important to the program. Circle one was distance. Number two was, believe it or not, access to law enforcement is critical for these programs. Sometimes we have to call law enforcement. In some areas of the region, when we're in a community that doesn't have law enforcement readily available, we depend on the county, you can take anywhere from 30 to 45 minutes before law enforcement gets to the program. That was a problem that we identified. And then we also realized that these programs, like all special ed positions today, are hard to fill. And so when we recruit to these programs in particular, we wanted to make sure that the program was located in a regional center, if you will, a place where people would want to move, there'd be housing readily available and whatnot. So those were kind of some primary things we looked at. So when we first started looking at locations, we identified six sites in the region. We talked about Hutchinson. Now, since that time, we're committed more to Cosmos than Hutchinson. They're real close to each other. We talked about Wilmer. We talked about Montevideo. We don't have a program in Montevideo today. And then we talk about Pipestone, Wyndham, and Marshall. So into the future, we will have six locations. How we came up with those, we're to meet those primary considerations that I just talked about. And if you took the map and you drew kind of a circle around, you said about 35 or 40 miles, because that was our goal, would we have program available for students? The northwest part of our region, sparsely populated, it's one of the hardest areas for us to serve when it comes to this. But that was a part of the work that we've done. On the right-hand side, there's a three-page document. I want to kind of push you to the third page of this. And it'll tell you a little bit about how we get to the resolution. And I will get to the resolution. I apologize for taking a little bit of time to get there. As a part of the study, we said, you know, first of all, collaboration is important. And so we want to collaborate with our school districts when we can. We want to collaborate with local units of government when we can. We want to make these things happen so that we can manage costs and we can make these programs as affordable as possible. So as we started looking at ways to do that, I'm going to take you a little bit around the region. So in Wyndham, we've had a program in Wyndham for as long as I've been with the co-op, probably before then. We actually do a, we administer an area learning center there that started probably 18 years ago when the superintendent, two superintendents, Wyndham and Jackson, came to us and said, will you administer our area learning center? We're losing about $100,000 a year. We said, well, you know, we can't lose $100,000 a year, but we'll certainly administer. And we've been administering that program ever since. So we've been committed to Wyndham. Wyndham is in the process of doing their own work with a bond referendum for an elementary building. If that bond passes, we've committed to Wyndham to looking at Winfair Elementary School, which would be a school that would become available as a part of their bond referendum. Today, we're in their oldest elementary school. Schools work pretty well for our programs, for the most part. But with old schools comes old stuff, like roofs and windows and all those boilers, all those kinds of things. And there's really no good way for us to find the resources to do the deferred maintenance. Or, in the case of our programs, it seems like whenever I talk about this, I get a lot of hands raised to, here, you know, we got a school for you. Facilities matter when we talk about the needs of these students. And here's what I mean. Our students coming into this room, they would find the top of that bookshelf, and that's where they would be. If you look around the outside, and this building is new enough, if you look around the outside of many older buildings, when they do electrical work, they put the electrical and the conduit on the outside of the wall. Our kids like to go and tear that off. So facilities matter. If you think of an elementary building, if you step out into most elementary schools and you look down the hall, what do you see? Typically, you see doors on the other end of a long hallway. Our kids, when they get out into that hall, what do they like to do? They like to run. And they run out the other side. So facilities matter. This room here, you might see, if we were in Cosmos, you might see a single desk in here. We might be using this as a timeout room, because that's all we have. So facilities matter. And as we looked at the needs of the facility, we started to look at what that might do. Of course, all of this comes with a cost. So going back to Wyndham, Winfair Elementary School, they identified, the district of Wyndham identified in 2015 about $5 million of deferred maintenance that would need to be done. Some of that's been taken care of, not all of it. If we moved into that building, we're going to have somewhere in the neighborhood of $3 to $4 million of deferred maintenance. We'd have probably another $3 or $4 million of refurbishing to make that into a setting for facility. You can see, we've identified $8 million of investment that would have to happen. In Pipestone, we have great collaboration with Minnesota West, just as you do. I know you're doing some work with them. They're great to work with. When we look at that space as well, it wasn't designed for a setting for facility. We've identified $5 million that would need to be done in collaboration with Minnesota West. Marshall, we don't currently have a facility there. When we look at what's happening in Marshall, we would likely do a lease, we lease all of our square footage today. But it would likely be the refurbishing of existing square footage, or we'd start a build from scratch. So where do the students go today? We're in this little tiny town of Bellevue. And Bellevue is a little tiny town. Bellevue's one of our more interesting stores. We don't pay a lease with Bellevue, but we pay for everything that's broken that needs to be fixed in Bellevue. That's our arrangement with the owner. The owner's been a great partner with that. Bellevue is full. There's no room to put any more students in Bellevue. Right now, I'm expecting we're going to see the heating and cooling system. The boiler in Bellevue is, we're looking at that because we had some problems this winter. If we have to replace the whole heating and cooling system, it'll be north of 100 grand. So when we start looking at how we do some of these things, Bellevue's been, I tell this story, it's, we were, it was a good thing the tornado happened in the summer because nobody was hurt, and we were able to replace a whole bunch of windows and roofs with insurance money. And that's how that works. I mean, that's how we work in Bellevue, and that's how we kind of put these things together. But Montevideo, Montevideo does not have a program today, but it's one of the areas that we've identified. Montevideo is kind of interesting. The superintendent there met with the city administrator. The city administrator said, we'd love to have a program. We would love to have a site. We'd love to help. And so at Montevideo, the EDA, Montevideo, is, the school district donated land to the EDA. The EDA is going to build a facility, about a $4.5 million facility on that land, and help publicly finance that for us so that we'll have a program. That is likely to open in the fall of 2019. So that'll be our first outcome of this plan. Wilmer, a little bit different story in Wilmer. We haven't seen the same collaboration at this point from the city. We're struggling, Wilmer. Today, our program is in the old state hospital. If you can think about where that's at, kind of north end of town. Very institutional. We're on, the floors are, there's three floors. We're trying to expand programming there. Not to be confused with Minnesota West Technical College, which is confusing because I thought it was the same thing for a long time. There's MinWest Technology is the name of the owner of that facility now. They want to have, they've shared with us that at the end of the day, they want all technology-based companies leasing from them. So it's short-term for us. So we need to find a solution in Wilmer. And I talked a little bit about Cosmos. Cosmos, we did a deep dive. A few weeks ago, I got a call from the principal saying, you know, the snow is melting and we have water running through the building. And it was not a good thing, obviously. But the hour of Cosmos Co. City has been great to work with.
So have they don't have.
The bottom line is, to get this started, we've identified between $40 and $50 million of investment to get these six facilities in the region. Today, the state does not have tools that work very well, financial tools that work very well for us to be able to do this. So I spent some time in St. Paul in the spring. I've been down in St. Paul, and I talked in particular with Senator Dames and Senator Weber, Senator Lang. They represent the majority of our region, and I shared this information with them, hoping they write a check. Well, they haven't written a check, but we got their attention. And the reason why this is important to me is, I think these children, as much as you all think, every child, in your role as a school board member, believes that every child ought to have the best facility they can have. I know you're working on it here in Pipestone. I know you've got a great facility here. And we believe the same thing. We're going to continue to push to find a way to make that happen. Part of what I'm asking you to consider is a resolution. And the resolution simply says, you recognize that all children should have a great facility to be educated in. You recognize that in partnership with SWWC, we provide those services in collaboration with you. You recognize now, after seeing this information, that there's a significant amount of investment that needs to happen. And as a result in that resolution, you would ask that the legislature and the governor would support finding ways to make this happen. And what do I mean when I say, what would that look like? What would make this happen? So we have some friends who are a part of what are called intermediate districts. An intermediate school district is much like Southwest West Central Service Cooperative. The difference is, they serve member districts around the 10-county metro area. Most of them have fewer schools. Obviously, they're all fairly large. And state law today allows the intermediate district, school district members, to levy $65 per pupil above the lease levy max that they currently have. That $65 of levy goes for intermediate school district facilities. We don't have access to those funds. When that comes up, it's something that I go, yeah, that would be nice. My superintendent colleagues push back and say, you know, we're all struggling with our own needs, and now you want us to levy taxes to do this? I understand all that. And my response is, you know, levying $65 in Minnetoka is not the same as it is in Minneota. And I'd like to see it equalized. I'd like to see it be all state aid. And I'm going to continue to push and make an argument for that. It's not going to happen overnight. I think we're going to continue to chip away at this. I think we're going to have to in St. Paul. But nobody's coming running to provide us with these funds at this point in time. I want to be able to go to St. Paul and say, here, here's a list of 55 school districts, 54 school districts, 50 school districts in our region who said, you know what, we need to do something about this. Will it make a difference? I don't know. It can't hurt. And that's what I'm asking for you to consider tonight. These programs are necessary. You all, I, you all know about children that are in our school because it percolates up to the board oftentimes. I was in Lake Benton last week, and they were sharing with me a story of a young elementary student who was throwing chairs that very day in their school building. We need to find ways to provide appropriate education for these children. We're doing it. The challenge is, it appears like the need is continuing. The need is actually getting younger in some instances, and we need to continue to make this happen for those kids. That's my ask of you. I will stop now and take a breath and answer any question about the co-op that you might have. I'll answer any question about this particular project that we're working on. And Randy O'Leary will answer. He's working in St. Paul so far. So he'll be on board. Some questions that you might have.
I'll make a comment that this past week, I was able to visit two of the learning centers. One was in Cosmos and one was in Pipestone. And, yeah, it's pretty eye-opening to see, you know, the level of needs these kids have. And so I think it would be important for Southwest Minnesota to have facilities to be able to educate.
I may add that Blue Mound, at expanding their level four programming, allowed the school district, we were sending kids to Sioux Falls and to some other areas also. So this gives us, gets kids off of buses and not having to be on the bus for two hours a day and actually served right here in our community. We're lucky that we do have that there. But, you know, when you do talk about other areas, I think there's a student coming over here from Westbrook.
Yep.
I mean, that's quite a haul over here. And so trying to get these spaced out appropriately, the issue is, is where's their space and how much openings are they? So when these kids have needs, you know, it's how do you get them into those programs? So it's definitely one of those things that, when they talk about special education funding also, I think MRAA does a nice job of, and they're really working hard to show that there's a significant disparity with rural and outstate Minnesota as compared to the metro. They're spending more. They have access to more than we do out here, and that's a problem. And I think that's where Cliff is coming at. So some of that data's coming. I don't think he's, I don't think he's quite got it all ready yet, but we're working on that. And I think the legislature, when I was down at the Capitol, I think they were very receptive. But, you know, this is one of those things that's going to take a little time.
It's about economy of scale, you know? So and our challenge is just the job. You know, we have the same needs that you do. We just have fewer students, one, and they live further bar. And we've learned, you know, because, again, I understand that there may be buildings available in other communities. And we've learned that it's critical to have onsite administration in these programs. We've tried to share. It's worked very well. It's like, you know, Murphy's Law, where there's a problem, the administrator's somewhere else, you know? If they just don't, if you could plan all that, it'd be a lot easier. This has become, for me, it's become a very, very strong, passionate kind of thing. I just think that we're going to find a way to make this happen. And for as long as I'm at the co-op, we'll continue to push to find ways to pay for it, with the recognition that, you know, that you all have constraints as well. And so we'll continue to work on that. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Always available to answer questions. We appreciate the relationship that we have with Pipestone Area Schools, the relationship we have with the superintendent, Kevin, and all of you. And we're going to continue to do what we can to provide the best, most affordable services.
And just to clarify, this resolution doesn't commit the Pipestone Area School District anything. It's just basically saying, we support the efforts to try to find a solution to these facility needs for our students in the co-op.
So what I, when I, kind of was a little bit sarcastic about the, can you write a check for $50 million? So one of the asks I had, so if you, if you know how the legislature, this year's a bonding year, so they don't like to, it's supposed to be policy and bonding. Well, if we're a city or a county and we're asking for a bridge, they would likely include that project into this bonding bill. They don't like to put school stuff in the bonding bill, because they get worried that now, if they were to fund this, then every school in the state's going to come asking for additional funds. So that's why when I say, you know, put it in the bonding bill, the first reaction is, oh, we don't like to do that. We don't like to put schools in. And I kind of tried to make an argument, well, we're not really a school. Well, they didn't buy that. But it, so that, I mean, the thing that is important is that today, the $50 million kind of level sets us. And then we still need to work on, I mean, there's some legislation that says if every single district in the co-op agrees, you can use long-term deferred dislocations, facility maintenance dollars to do this. We're not going to get all our districts. We have 50-plus. We can't get them all to agree what day of the week it is to try and get them to, this won't happen. It reminds me a little bit of the early days of the fly. We came at that first saying, can we all get on the same calendar? Yeah, right. You're going to bell schedule? Yeah, right. But we could get 10 days. It's kind of a similar thing. I think it's going to have to happen here. But, yeah, tonight, I'm not asking, you're not committing any resources. You're not committing to anything. I think that as time goes along, I think we'll get some financial tools that will, you'll be able to use. But it's not going to be where I want it to be. You know, even the $65 on the lease levy, you know, most of our rural districts aren't using their 212, you know? But I want the $65. I want it equalized. I want the state to have skin in the game. I just think that's a much fairer way to do it. That's not going to happen the first swag either. It's going to just take some time to get this done. But in the meantime, we'll continue to expand programs so that if you have an autistic child that lives in Pipestone, they're not having to go to Cosmos or Wilmer or Wyndham. They'll be able to go to a program right here. And, you know, our biggest challenge with that is to be able to have, you know, room. And sometimes my superintendent colleagues, they put a lot of pressure on me and say, I have a student. And I say, we don't have any room. But I have a student, and it gets to be hard. And I get it. I mean, it's just a hard thing. But we'll continue to do.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Coming over here, helping us understand.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. All right. So we'll move on to eight point two, to approve the resolution to fund Southwest West Central Service Cooperative Federal Setting Four. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Mrs. Wies, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Taubert. Any other thoughts or comments? Any other discussion?
I would, I would just like to mention that I'll be abstaining from the vote on this with my recent employment change.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Erdman. Any other comments? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the resolution to fund Southwest West Central Service Cooperative Federal Setting Four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Opposed.
And abstaining.
Aye.
All right. Hearing no other, I think it passes. One, two, three, four, with one abstention? Yes? Okay. It passes. Very good. So do we have to read this?
No.
Okay. Okay. So we're going to new business eight point three. Heidi, State FFA Convention. Hi there.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Heidi Brandt. I'm the agriculture teacher, FFA advisor here in Pipestone. And tonight, I'm asking for permission and request for the State FFA Convention, which is held April 22nd through the 24th in St. Paul. We will be taking approximately 32 students, some that are going to be competing, one that will be receiving her, an award for a state proficiency finalist and is also currently had an interview last week for state star chapter farmer. And what we're looking at for expenses is rooms for two nights for the students, myself and Mr. Boomgarden, a bus, a substitute teacher for two days, and registration that includes insurance as well for the members and for the chapter. And the total cost is about $5,476. We would leave early Sunday morning and return back late afternoon, early evening on Tuesday night as well. And the FFA chapter would pick up any, will be responsible for the meals and any other expenses that we would have during that time.
How's this compare in previous years for the number of students going?
This compares from last year's report about the same number. I think that they took around 35 is what it was. So 32 is approximate. We do have three teams so far that will be competing, and three more with regional events coming up that could potentially also be competing as well, with that number included in there with that.
If they, is there a chance they won't go, some of those teams?
There, yes. There's a possibility that they wouldn't qualify for state.
Okay.
At the regional level. Some will go and serve as delegates. Our food science team's competing tomorrow for their state competition, but those students would also be going, part of this number as well, to be recognized on stage if they do. if they do well. And we're hoping they do.
Any other questions?
So is this a about the same approximate cost as a year ago then that you're asking the district to?
Yes.
Any other questions?
I'm making motion to, oh, can I do that?
Is there a motion?
Yes.
Go ahead, make a motion.
Keep things moving along here.
Yep. I have a motion to let Heidi and the State FFA, go to the State FFA convention.
Yes, so moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Tauber, she'll have a second. Thank you, Mr. Box. Any other discussion or the comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of allowing the FFA kids to go to St. Paul to the convention, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those both same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you. Good luck.
Yeah, good luck, and thank you, Tammy.
Yes.
Move them right along. All right, new business eight point nine. Going to move that one. Discussion on Activity Travel Release Policy. This is an addition.
Right. Policy committee met last week. And this was something that come up from Mr. Anderson. And the committee kind of thought might be just as good to bring this to the whole board for discussion. You don't have to make a decision on it tonight. But I thought we'd have Mr. Anderson kind of explain what the requests that he's been getting and maybe what our current policy is and what we potentially be looking at doing here, so.
Yeah, when I came here four years ago, you know, I created that travel release form and stuff. So I want to be, you know, legal and cover ourselves when we allow students to ride home with their parents and such. And at the time, you know, I talked to Jim and he said, no, it's only going to be them released to their parents. And so that's what we've been going on ever since. At other schools I've been at, there are ways to allow grandparents to take them home or to allow parents to let their child go with other parents. But this is what he wanted, and so that's what we went with. I would say in the last four years, the biggest request is probably with grandparents to take home. Do I get a lot of them? No. And then once in a while, we just have one with a sister, or I want to get a sister take person home. It's been an older sister. And then once in a while, somebody questions, you know, it'd be nice if we could have, if I allow my child to be taken home with another parent because he's there and we're not there. And it's, you know, and they have to get back for this, whatever function it is, you know? So, you know, I don't really have a recommendation as far as what you want to do. I would say that the more you open it up, the more headaches it will be. And the more, our coaches will be uncomfortable because obviously you're kind of opening up the can of worms wider and wider here, the more you expand it. I'm not, I, I, I will enforce whatever you guys deem appropriate. And there's ways to do things so that you can, we can do some things. You know, one, one thing I was thinking about when I was going to be talking a little bit is, is, you know, when a parent requests that their child's going to be released to them after a contest, they do the form, I get it. I alert the coaches before the contest. And then when they go there and the child's going to leave, the coach sees the parent, the child goes, and there's confirmation, okay? As opposed to if parent A has a daughter and is going to release to parent B, okay? The coach doesn't see that other parent. So there's not really any confirmation. We all think it went through the right channels and all this, but it, it opens it up and, you know, for that. So I'm just, so that's just a little bit of leiriness from experience that I have with doing that. But like I said before, you know, when I was in Albert Lee, we had it so, in special occasions, they could do things like that. And what it required was an extra phone call to me and some of those things from those parents. So it, it's all doable. Like again, I'm not, I'm okay with whatever you decide, okay? So I don't really have an opinion here, but have some experience with it. But whatever you decide, we'll, we'll make work. And, and I'll, I'll create a new travel release form if we change it at all to encompass whatever we want to put into it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Mr. Anderson?
I think we just, as a policy committee, just didn't quite know where we wanted to go. If we wanted to open that can of worms or if we just wanted to leave it, you know, as is. And, you know, if special circumstances came up where, you know, parents were on vacation or parents weren't there and they needed to go home with grandparents. If that's how it was then stated on the form, you know, and it was cleared that way. You know, again, we just, that's why we wanted you guys to have a little bit of input because we didn't want to really, we didn't have any good recommendation as to what to bring to you guys. So if there was any recommendation, if we wanted to change anything, so that's.
And our concern too is we'd want it to be someone over eighteen. Like to a sister, you know, or a brother, you'd want them to be released to someone over eighteen. You wouldn't want it just to be like sixteen-year-olds, you know what I mean?
Right.
So we didn't know about that.
The form needs to be turned in by noon?
We recommend Gavin. We, we have backup plans to that though, because parents forget and, oh my gosh, and there's this big thing. So there's always backup plans. I always tell my coaches to take some extra ones along. And then they, every once in a while, I'll be at home and I get a call, you know, from a coach. I got this, what do I do? I tell them what to do and, and we make it work. But it still falls under, it's still going by the same guidelines.
Yeah.
Currently, it's just parents, so this would be, should we look into something further? And again, I, you don't have to make a decision tonight. We can put some feelers out there, kind of throw this around a little bit and see. I think what Tammy suggests too is, are there special circumstances? What are they? I think we want to try to accommodate, I mean, if parents are on vacation and someone else is watching your kids for you, you know? I think we want to try to be able to accommodate that. Or a grandparent is, is where they're at, so.
And how, how well has it been working where it's just parents? How much backlash did you get?
You know, the first year you change anything, there's backlash, okay? So the first year, there was a few. And there was, there was a couple of times when it didn't work. And I would say that was probably because my coaches weren't as educated as I thought they were educated. But well, I'll tell you, for ninety-eight percent of the time, it works really well. It's really been a good system. Coaches like it, they don't have to think, you know, I email them all the names and, and so they know ahead of time who's going to be, you know? And then like I said, every once in a while, there's a case where our oldest parent forgot and stuff. And now our coaches are so used to it, they know what to do. And they'll contact me and then it's easy. So it's working, I think it's working really well the way it is right now. It just doesn't address those special circumstances as well.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Anderson?
I haven't heard anybody's thoughts.
Anyone? Anyone?
Anyone?
Feeler, feeler?
Yeah, I'd say we just maybe get some feelers from other districts. I don't know, I mean, could we handle it on a case-by-case basis with these special circumstances rather than opening it all up? Or is that just going to be more headaches than?
I feel like then you got some people that think other people got special.
Well, no, I mean, I think if you word it somehow, if you change how it's stated in there, you know, and if it clear, you know, if the parent, you know, instead of saying, you know, is released to me, however it's wording, you know, it's saying that, yes, this person is coming home with me. I mean, you could state, you know, relationship to that student or whatever. If it's, you know, I, I think that there's different wording that you could, you could do. But I mean, I think we do need to probably have some type of limitations on it. You know, special circumstances only. We prefer to be released to parents only, but, you know?
I would say if you were going to do some special circumstances, probably a phone call would be not just a release form coming.
Sure.
But I would actually need to talk to the parents.
Sure.
That's what we did in places past. And I would feel, I'm very uncomfortable if that wasn't the case.
Right.
In special circumstances, so. But again, like I said, don't make a decision tonight, we can all think about it. And I could certainly get you information on what the rest of the Big Self does.
Sure.
You know, that's not any problem at all.
Mm-hmm.
So, yep. If that would help.
Just to have an idea, I guess, what.
Sure. It's always good to get other students.
Yeah, right, right. Yeah, because we don't have, yeah.
So you'll get what the Big Self does.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thanks, bye. Thank you very much. All right, now, back to number six. Administrative Reports and Information, six point one one. Hello, Jackie.
Don't have a lot to say. I did take in beyond a contingency, I did make some budget transfers between object codes. Other than that, we're at sixty-six percent. My sure, we're at sixty-one percent. Looks like we're doing okay.
Repeat.
All right, thank you. Anyone have any questions for Jackie? Thank you, Jackie. Six point one point two, Mr. Strasser. Hello?
Hi, everyone. Two things. First of all, just to keep, keep you aware, our ACT, our students will be taking the ACT onsite April fourth. Today, we did a practice round with our juniors. And you always get that glazed cloths over look when they come out of there. But we've got that in place and hopeful that the prep that we've done and the practice helps our students do well when it comes to next week. The other thing, last day for our seniors. So graduations coming awfully quick. That's on Memorial Day, that's Sunday. And we have been doing the last day for seniors the Tuesday before. So if you be kind enough to approve that day, then I can have that as the last day for our seniors. And we do a little send-off form about three o'clock on Tuesday. I believe that's the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-second.
Is it twenty-second?
When's Memorial?
Right, Memorial Day is the twenty-eighth. Graduation's twenty-seventh. Am I in the right year?
May twenty-second. Sorry.
Yes, twenty-second.
Oh, sorry. Got my days wrong. Twenty-second, please. So that's traditionally when we've done it. It allows us to make sure we have everything ready for senior recognition, which is on that Friday morning. And then, of course, graduation. So just taking care of a lot of the office-type stuff. Seniors like to be done, it's a good thing. And if that's all right on your end, that's how I would proceed.
So you'd like a motion on that?
Sure.
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to approve May twenty-second as their last day?
Second.
Second.
Okay, we got it. So moved. And?
Second.
Second. Mr. Erdman, give it to him. All right, all those in favor of having May twenty-second the last day for the seniors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, or, yeah, those opposed same sign? Motion carries. There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And that's it?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, Ms. Farman.
I don't have much, just because I'm waiting for some information from our CEM initiative that we applied for. We should know about that next week and also waiting for our pre-K voluntary. So just waiting patiently, trying to. So we'll hopefully get some information next week on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Farman, six one four. Hello, Ms. Wellman.
Hello. I helped with the ACT prep today. Hopefully, we have all the kinks out for next week. MCA testing is right around the corner. We, our technology should be up to par. We have all the adjustments made. I just need to send a few links and get things rolling. And our testing schedule seems to be, no one's had anything to say in difference of it. So I think we're going to roll with what we have. Hopefully, and pray for no outages or anything like that. So other than that, just working with everyone else on budget and planning forward.
Thank you. Any questions for any of those, Corey, Tony, or Mel? We're good? Any questions? All right, thank you. Admin?
Oh, we're like, we're good on like the whole technology day and all that other, I mean, we're got all the info on that.
Thursday.
Thursday.
It's Thursday. Staff were requested to submit their plans to me and their building principal. All the admin have access to those plans in case a parent has a question and they can't get ahold of someone. We can access that information. Plans are translated. We still have a few staff members getting those plans to me. Letters went out from the elementary and high school, so.
Yep.
Okay.
Let's go.
Now, the teachers aren't required to come into the buildings, are they? I mean, they, they can just kind of work from home as, yeah, just like a whole virtual, virtual day. Okay. Some may choose to come in, I suppose, if they're comfortable with it. But that, that's kind of, I just had, I had a parent ask me if they knew if the teachers were going into the buildings or, like, I don't think so, I said, because this is like really a virtual day. Everybody's just kind of, I said, there may be some that choose to go in, but.
And we have their phones. They can call their rooms and then they will get an email message and they can play the message right on their computer, so that'll be pretty nice. And so they can access them wherever.
Very good.
It's an online class.
Yeah.
Which is really a lot of work.
All right. Any other questions for them? Very good. Thank you, you three. School Board Members, six point two. Any questions, anything?
Just our policy committee, which that was the main thing. And then we had, we talked about doing, as far as our discipline, or what was it? What was the actual policy number? It was the discipline.
Well, it's our school discipline policy, but it was a question about a progressive discipline, which our policy is. But I think it's more of, you know, what are the consequences of different events? And Mr. Strasser has a kind of a guideline sheet that, that I shared with the committee and they thought that looked really good. And so we probably will include that in the handbooks is where that would be. And I believe the elementary already has some similar type of thing in place, so that was, that was where that was at. You also have the wellness policy, which needs to be approved tonight. And then there was a question on restraining order policies. And I contacted our legal counsel and we were told that that's a court issue and we don't intervene. So we just make, the building principals will make reasonable accommodations for those things when they come up. And so I think we handle all those things pretty well. We'll talk about the wellness policy when we get to that, so.
All right, so anything else from the school board members?
Finance Committee met.
Yeah, we went through everything again. Still trying to figure some stuff out, but we've got recommendations that are in here tonight.
Okay, thank you.
And that's been working on more of the administrative budget stuff with supplies and summer projects. And the full budget Jackie has been working on and that has to be approved in June. So this is like a piece of it.
All right, thank you. And six point three, Superintendent Anderson?
Enrollment is, went back down to February, so it's just got the whole heartbeat thing going up and down. But I think typically our, our spring, we start to bounce back a little bit with a few more students. So that's, that's where that's at. We did do kindergarten roundup and our numbers are looking.
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four is kind of where we're at, that we're watching. And of course, our junior kindergarten numbers get in there too. So we're probably looking at a hundred and seven, a hundred and eight right now. But we're going to make sure, double-check and see where everything is at, so. And I think I've mentioned that the problem is, is that number typically doesn't go down. Usually, we get more through the summer. So we do want, we're twelve kind of unknown, that we really are trying to verify if they're here or not because that twelve gets to be a big, big change. But we're, we're, we've got large numbers there in kindergarten, so we'll see where that plays out. I also was down to St. Paul, to the Capitol and got to meet with senators and representatives as a group, Southwest superintendents went down there. Biggest, you know, school safety is a high priority. They're talking about that. And we have our Safe School Levy that we use to pay for our resource officer. I don't know what they're going to do. They're talking about expanding some of that. There, there's other finance things that they're talking about. They're talking about expanding LTFM to allow for secure entry. They're talking about expanding LTFM to allow for secure entrances and those types of things. But until we get that and find out where it's at, I've seen numbers that range anywhere from twenty-two thousand dollars to, you know, up to forty thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars, somewhere in that range. Depends upon what they, they open up. Most of them you can use, not the LTFM, but the other safe schools things you can use to hire personnel. But right now, it doesn't look like there's enough in there for that additional social worker that we've been looking for. So we'll have to see what things play out here through, through May. So also, I'd like to say that the legislature, I believe, has come up with a solution for the TR, teachers retirement and PERA, the pension. And they were increasing the contributions and they are going to fund that. So we, as a district, will get the revenues for that increase that is going into TRA. And I believe that passed the Senate today and it's slated to go to the House tomorrow. So I hate to, we still got a few weeks to go, but they're making good progress. And the resolution in the Senate today passed sixty-eight to nothing. So there was no divisiveness on this pension. So I'm assuming the same thing will happen in the House. You know, when we were talking with the legislators about school safety, we really talked about how it's multifaceted. It's, it is about secure in the buildings. It's also about, you know, proper support services for students. It's about listening, being attentive, you know, and hearing what's going on and not ignoring issues with your students. It's appropriate programs for kids, which is really something that kind of then we went right into what Cliff was talking about with level four programming. You know, those students just don't always, and I'm building principals can attest to that, that it doesn't go very well with them in the regular program. So getting them into these programs. Cliff didn't go into it much about the hallway, but they actually build them with curved hallways, so they can't see the door and it stops them from running. You know, it's little things that like that. And, you know, he talks about the cupboards. I mean, just having those facilities that are there for those kids is just going to take some time. And I think that's another, again, we, we have younger and younger students going to these programs. The nice thing is, is that they actually go there and some of them are transitioning back after a couple of years because they've been able to get the appropriate help. And so a lot of this is, is good stuff. Preschool is another important piece, so we can identify earlier for those students. So a lot of this is, I'm happy that we have the Pipestone facility. That's really nice to have one in our own community, so. But it's kind of what I had.
All right. Any questions for the superintendent? Tammy, Randy, Katie? Good. No questions?
No.
All right, there, there's no old business, so we'll move on to number eight, the new business. And we are now moving to, phew, eight point four.
I should, the wide area network, this is technical, okay? I got to serve on the wide area network committee that helped to put this together for the entire co-op. And I was sitting with the guys that were as techie as Josh Scoop. But there were like six of them. So it was really fun. And I kept asking, you know, you can't understand what they're talking about, so I had to break it down. I go, okay, how much internet are we getting? I mean, how big's the pipe coming into our school with internet? How much internet can we get, you know? If this is what we got, how big will the new pipe be? And they're like, well, it'll be like this. I go, okay. Anyway, it's just fun having these conversations with tech guys trying to explain this. But basically, what's going to happen is, is that it's, we, right now, the towers with the microwave is how we get our internet here. And when it's really foggy or really raining hard or snowing, we will lose service because the microwaves can't get through. With this proposal that was, been accepted, we will now be wired. So the fiber optic cable will come right into our buildings. We have all of our different sites. And we will have five times the internet bandwidth or power, five times what we have currently. And it's cheaper. So that's a good thing.
We win.
So it comes in, we're getting, we're getting much more, much more dependable. This is a twenty-first century. I'd call it probably as modern a, a network as it can be. I'm not an expert, so don't ask me too much. But I mean, what it is, is you have these big server places that ours currently runs through somewhere and gets into Minneapolis. Well, now we're going to go right to Sioux Falls, who's got direct links to Google and Yahoo and I don't know, you know, that go. And then there's, there's actually two of them there. And then they branch off. One goes to St. Paul or Minneapolis. One goes to Denver. Another one goes to Omaha. So they were explaining how we are going to have redundancies. We'll have better backups. We'll have better service. No interruptions hardly and, and all this faster internet. So again, I think this is a really good thing for, for southwest Minnesota and rural Minnesota and for our schools to, to get this quality of internet. We also have capabilities to, right now, we're going to have one gig. Don't ask. We're going to get one gig of something, internet. But you have capability that you could get up to ten. Tech guy love that. There's one hundred and twenty-four megabytes in a gig. And we currently run at like twenty-eight. So that's where we get our five times with what we're going to have. Anyways, the other side of this is, is the cost that they're in there. We also get network support. The service co-op has guys that back up our, our servers, back up all of our data. And all of that comes through and they filter out, they, they, they support all of that. We had a school district that's kind of thinking they can go out and get their internet cheaper. But I'm, I don't know how they're going to be able to do that and get the same types of support and backup. I just, but, so I believe that this is, this is a really good thing. And it's actually going to be like two hundred bucks a month cheaper, which I know these are thousands of dollars, but it's a good thing, so. But we have an agreement for Brown Hill, Middle School, High School, Minders Library and also out at the Colony. So those are our five sites. You'll look in there and you'll see dollar amounts. Those are maximum dollar amounts. And we're not going to be using that much, but they have to put in the maximum amount for this E-rate stuff. I also asked them about the elementaries and if we ever made a change and we combined them or did something different, we're not locked into this for, for the five years. If a site changes, you know, they will make those adjustments. So they made a ten-year deal. This is a five-year, but then it can be renewed for another five years after that. So I recommend that we, we go with these agreements.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the wide area network consortium with Southwest West Central Service Cooperative for all the schools and the library?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Toward.
I want to sign up too.
And for Kate's house.
Yeah, exactly. And my house.
Running it right by you?
Work that, work that in.
We'll get that.
I'm pretty close to Brown School.
We'll get that camo running. I'm sure they're coming in right along.
We'll see.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Toward. Any other thoughts, questions, concerns?
When is this effective?
July one.
Okay.
And we're supposed to have it up and running, so.
All right.
I, there's evidently, there's fiber here. It's probably in the ditch. They just got to run it up to the building, so they'll have a little bit of work, but that'll all get done. And we're supposed to be up and running by July one. That was the contract.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I didn't read the whole thing.
Any other discussion?
There's a lot of pages.
All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the wide area network consortium with Southwest West Central Service Cooperative for all the schools and libraries signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Abstaining?
Oh, are you abstaining?
Yeah, I'm going to abstain again.
Sorry.
It's all right.
We're going to run into a problem here, I think.
Sorry, so, okay, so it's four in favor and one abstaining, so it passes. Motion carries. Moving on to eight point five, facility assessment, next steps discussion.
The facility committee met, keepers right after our meeting in early March and kind of went through the community meeting. And, you know, what did we take away from that and, and what, what we like to do as we go forward. So I put together kind of a little sheet of just the, basically the themes and questions that came out of the meeting. We have long lists of questions and different things that we're looking at. But basically, the primary things that came out, and I know that a lot of you were there, but, and they're in no particular order. I just kind of had these as the thematic things that were there. Efficiencies, I think they want, the community wants to look at, you know, what are your operation costs? What does it look like if you, what, if you do this or that? And so we need to work through, what are the efficiencies when you bring them together or what they cost now? Land issues with ownership and is there enough space in our places on all of our sites? So if we do need to do anything at one or the other or both or, or, you know, what, do we have enough there? I think it was pretty clear they didn't want a central repeat, so whatever happens, kind of bring things through to finality. And, and they don't want to have any buildings standing around the community. I think the space needs and justifications, why do we, we, we're, we show we're operating at a hundred and twenty percent capacity in our elementary schools. You know, what, what is it that we're needing and what's, what are we lacking? So I think they would like to see what those things are. Some questions on maintenance issues, you know, why, what, what's happened or things, why are, why? You know, some of the buildings are sixty years old. Some of them are fifteen years old and it's, stuff is just starting and it's a natural thing. What are the funding options for the maintenance issues? And then some ongoing maintenance concerns. There were some, some things in the report I think that people were kind of questioning as far as, you know, what, what's happening with this and why. So I think they're wanting to take a look at how we maintain and, and keep our buildings up as is. There was a question about future enrollment projections and where are we going to be at? School security was a thing that came up also. And we had in our LTFM plan some security, so there was good questions surrounding that. And I think they want to come up with a good solution there. And again, you know, cost, finance, you know, LTFM reserves, roofs, you know, roof options. You know, what's the current bond? Can we keep that cost pretty, pretty much the same? So I think there's the finance piece. And then communications, we had nothing but pretty positive response on. The community members really liked the opportunity for the meeting to hear what was going on. They did ask for some more information to be on the website and be accessible. So I think we thought we could probably work on that, but I do need to talk with ISG to make sure that where all of that is at, but they do want that. So the committee talked about these things and basically they are recommending to the board that we request a community task force to consider options and provide a recommendation to the school board. This task force should be comprised of community members and they're trying, and it's not limited to these up here. It's, but I think they're trying to say, we want businessmen, owners, farmers, parents, contractors, ministerial, school district, communities, communities within our school district, representation, the EDA, contractors, local government, realtors, community at large. And we should also have the ex officio members of the task force that includes administration, curriculum, maintenance, technology, teachers and students if they're interested. I think they felt that probably there should be a chairperson that should be selected to run the meetings. The facility committee members will attend the meetings to observe and listen. And then applications, they, they wanted to have applications to be on the task force. That would be, the facility committee would review and make selections. And I think that would be, so we try to get that well-rounded view. We could be looking at a pretty big committee. I mean, if you want to get two or three from each one of those areas and others, I think that's where they, the reason for the applications is, is who's interested, who wants to serve. And then we don't want to get all farmers or all business owners or all parents at the, you know, I think you want to make sure you have a fair and a good selection of our community, community to be on this committee. So that was kind of where that was at. If the board were to approve that, I think they would, we were looking at Thursday, April 12th would be the next meeting. And hold it at Brown Elementary. And then we would, at that meeting, we would begin to share some of the information that we can share. Some of the data they want is awful big and it's going to take some time to, I mean, cost analysis, you just don't, you know, I mean, some of that takes, takes some significant time. So we may need to break that down and make the, the task force just kind of work on that. And then I think other meetings, they would like to get at the other buildings, Hill and Middle School, High School and around. And then also ISG is going to be working on a timeline kind of of where, what are we looking at and where are we going to go? So we also talked about that there's going to probably be a demographic study, community surveys, communication strategies, state reporting and election days. You have to kind of look at all of that stuff and see where things are at. So, but that's part of where this task force would be looking at. The board, I mean, one of the things with this is that a task force, when they come with a recommendation, it's pretty hard to not accept it. So if it's, if you have something, you know, and I think we want to get our community to provide input into this. So it's, it is one of those things. That was why we had the meeting and that's what, everybody heard it and I think it went very well. So we just want to continue on with that, that process, so. Questions, sir?
Are you looking for a motion tonight to approve the task force?
I think we would be looking for a motion that we would go forward with the process of using a task force to begin the facility study. The task force would be basically tasked them with doing, you know, what are your options, weighing them, looking at them. And eventually bringing a recommendation to the board for consideration. I think that's.
Yep.
Yep.
Randy?
Yep.
Does that sound all what?
Yep. I think we wanted your, your direction on that so that at this next meeting, if I remember right, it's been a while, that we would have applications available that night for people to pick up and kind of maybe explain a little bit what our expectations of that would be, you know? Obviously, put it out there on the internet and our website or whatever that, you know, can also stop in the district office and, and get one too, you know? And I, I just think it's.
I think there'd be, I mean, a task force is going to meet more than two or three times.
Right.
I mean, they're probably going to be meeting, you know, five, six times to review over things and, you know, and then kind of come up with that. So this is going to kind of go spring and into summer and into next fall a little bit, so it's kind of the idea. ISG has been using and said this, this process works very well, so they kind of helped facilitate, but it is a community-driven process, so.
Do you have this application already made? Application form is already made up or you're going to develop that? Or ISG has it?
Yeah, I, I got it.
Okay.
Okay, because I'm like, I, I was thinking that we talked or if ISG had one or that we were going to go off of. Okay, I can't remember what we.
Tweak them.
Tweak them.
Adjusted it.
Okay.
So, yeah, actually I have a form. And it, it's basically just a couple of, you know, what, what's your role in the community? And if you have multiple roles, you know, list those down. And then a little bit about why do you want to be on the, the, and that would be, you don't have to go to the community meeting on April 12th. You can, we'll have these available in the district office, probably available, but you would need to turn them into the district office. And then, like I said, the committee, facility committee would screen through and try to get a balanced task force. Now, if only three people sign up, then I guess we may have to go back to the drawing board because you want more than three people making this decision. board, cause you want more than three people making this decision, so we may have to...
Cause we thought, I mean, you know, it just as our little small committee, or even if we did something as a board, that it's still a lot to put on your plate to make, so we just thought, you know, if you involve the community, because this is a big decision, that, that would be best.
So the website, that's how you're gonna advertise it, or the website?
Well, we've got the newspaper and, and try to get things out through our, through our websites and Facebook and, you know, all the media outlets like we have for anything else, trying to get that word out. And, you know, we have that community meeting so people can do that there. Hopefully, again, like we did with the, the last one, I think we wanna try to contact the people that were there, cause we invited many of them, so encouraging them to come, cause we'll have some more information for them at that meeting, but also maybe they'll sign up to commit on this long, or they know people who do. And we didn't have all of those areas covered, but we had some of them and I think their insights are very helpful. Uh, when you're talking about a plumber, they can go through and look at the plumbing mechanics of things, and if you have concrete guys, they can look at what, you know, the site work is that's being done and so that we get, you know, using our community with the resources we have to, to make a good decision, uh, for the future of our facilities.
So all these community meetings though, you, are we planning on having them run just like the last one where the full board is there or not?
The committee talked about that the committee members would be there. I think any board member can be there to, you know, if they want to hear and listen, but, um, it would be more that that group, that task force is gonna be doing that, that work. And we were...
Maybe not at this next one, because we probably, we won't have that decided by then.
Right.
No. I don't know that...
But on April 12th, do you want everyone there or just...
I don't, we haven't really discussed the, the plan of how that whole night is gonna go. I think we kinda wanted to have them at the school so we could maybe take people on tours through the schools and just kind of see those buildings, next meeting we may have it at Hill. I mean, you know, so I, I think we kinda wanted to get people to, to see those buildings. Obviously, probably not gonna have, uh, all the answers to all those questions that we had had, um, you know, maybe we could collect some general ones and, yeah, I mean, so just more discussion, you know, okay, a month and a half has passed, you know, what are you hearing out there? You know, what, you know, just the, just those kind of things, you know, it may, probably won't be as long as the last one, um, you know, but it, it could be, you know, if you go on a tour and you, you know, just have discussions on the rooms and, you know, we'll have to have a meeting here to, to kind of figure out the, the plan of attack for that meeting, but, I, I mean, the committee will be there, I mean, if you guys wanna be present, absolutely, you know?
Okay.
We'll let you know, we'll keep you posted. Put it on your calendar for now.
Hold another community meeting to share information that can be answered from the, you know, all those lists, there's things that we can, we can put some of that in a frequently asked questions.
Yeah.
Here's some of the answers.
Yeah. Answers that, you know, we can get to.
But...
Some of it, some of that stuff is gonna take some digging and...
Everybody wants to know, what's the price and what's this? And I thought, you know, Rod did a nice job of explaining, you know, and Lance got it. He goes, okay, so you're gonna buy a tractor? Well, what, you know, how many horsepower? You know, is it gonna have the PTO, three point, you know, gonna have the G, you know? Okay, so, you know, you can put a lot in it or you can, what do you want? What are you looking at? So there's a lot of little things that need to be discussed, to be looked at before you can really come up with what is that? So that's why you kinda do some of this as a learning as you go along.
Yeah.
Finding out the information, more questions come up, so then you come back and find that out. They will also recommend that, you know, there are some community, there's some organized, you know, when you start getting to, uh, maybe some options, you can actually survey your community, find out where they're at, so, uh, they may be able to come with some reasons as to why they, they went with this. Um, you know, and of course, whatever we do has to go to the state and there are some guidelines, so, um, a lot, a lot of work to be done over the next year with all of this, so.
Okay, so would this sound like the motion that you're looking for possibly? For a motion to form a community task force to join the facilities committee to consider options and provide a recommendation to board? That's kinda what you have on it?
They wouldn't, they wouldn't join the, the facility committee, they'd just sort of become a community task force.
Okay.
Uh, to come up with a facility solution for...
Consider options or to can, to come up with... Deb, write that down.
(laughing).
We have to read that one to get a good... So we're looking for a motion to form a community task force to come up with...
Recommendations.
Recommendations and option, or options and recommendations for...
To our elementary facility and long-term facility maintenance needs.
Did you get that?
To our, to our elementary... Elementary facilities and long-term facilities maintenance.
Needs.
Needs.
Thank you. (laughing).
So can you read that back, please?
I have a motion to form a co, community task force to come up with options and recommendations for the elementary facilities and long-term facility maintenance needs.
Do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Box. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. Any other thoughts or discussion or comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of what Deb just said?[991.13][991.13](laughing) Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, save a sign. Motion carries unanimously. There you go. All right, moving on to eight point six, administration budget recommendation.
Um, been working since, while we kinda started in December, but really started working pretty diligently through January up until, um, kinda finalizing things here this month on our improvement suggestions or, um, for next year, uh, in our education program and also, um, managing our technology needs and also our capital outlay and long-term facility maintenance projects. So, uh, what I've got, uh, for you first is just, uh, kind of our education program. Uh, one of the things that we are looking to do is our English learners' supports, uh, enhancing that a little bit. Um, I have our numbers, uh, our, our Brown Elementary has the most students, uh, followed by Hill and then the Middle School, High School. We're proposing to put a full-time teacher at Brown Elementary next year, and then the, uh, Hill and the Middle School, High School will share a teacher, half and half or so, and then there'll be a paraprofessional at each, at Hill and Brown. Uh, we feel this is a good enhancement to our education for those students and, uh, we figured we, what was there? We have a little bit of a reduction, um, the FTEs of the teacher, so we will, we need to bring that up to full two and two paras, um, but we said that we would be able to reduce a paraprofessional or pull one from another area, so we would make that budget neutral. And I should add, the finance committee kinda said any improvements you really need to do or should be budget neutral, um, so that's what we've been kinda working from. Second item is if we need further preschool classroom space, uh, we've talked about more kindergarten potentially, and so we're gonna, that's what we've been watching, and if, and if we do need to add another kindergarten or possibly two kindergarten classrooms, we're gonna need to move out the preschool, so then we would need to lease more space, but we do have lease levy authority and we should be able to make that happen. Teacher, new teacher mentor and induction, um, we are looking to support the standard implementation, enhancing teacher practice, uh, and doing, uh, bringing in an instructional coach or multiple instructional coaches for next year. Um, we would do that by utilizing staff development funds, so we would use, use those funds, so we're able to pay for that. I am gonna say that, you know, the new teacher center and the service co-op, um, we had some, lot of interest back in November, uh, with that, it's kinda waned, so we're kind of in this flux of, I don't even know if they'll be able to support two instructional coaches, so it may be only one. Um, so, again, it's, it's, it's one of those things, I think, over the next month or so, we're probably gonna continue to discuss to see which way we wanna go with that. Uh, one of the ideas was is to kinda shift, um, Ms. Verstie from a tech integrationist to an instructional coach, cause it's a very similar thing, but she can also utilize her, you know, understanding of technology to help, uh, so kinda play a dual role. But these people are trained, uh, by the new teacher center to, uh, support teachers as instructional coaches. They would be full-time positions, um, and we would utilize one in the elementary and one in the middle school, high school.
So then would we still be having mentors that are getting paid now? Like the mentors that are getting paid and paired with, that would be gone then?
One of these, or these coaches would, would become the new teacher mentors, so they would...
Okay, so that...
And we would look at a two-year mentoring program, um, so that would be one thing that we would take off of our other teachers' plates, I guess, so as speak. Uh, we did have a request to increase the library supplies from Minders Library, um, just three thousand dollars, but we were looking at, we already spent some money in the library, so, um, probably not gonna be a big deal, we already have some of that money going there. The next one is our elementary library support and trying, and we're working with, uh, Jody Whacker from the library, and I think their staff is gonna be able to help us out with that, and I think they want to, but we really should be getting a library and into our elementary libraries so that we know what we've got there, where, where are the reading levels and, uh, really the, the elementary library should be, uh, supporting and complementing our, our literacy and our reading programs in the elementary school, and so the library really has an important role, and, um, I think Jody's very open to that and would love to get down and her staff get down there to start looking at what, what are we, what can we do and just where's it at? So, um, the only problem with that is, is we can't, you know, hopefully they don't get too busy and then they don't, you know, it's, this is where you're, when they're not your staff, it's kinda hard to, you know, if they wanna support our, our reading program, so I think they'll, they'll go that way. And then, uh, finally, our social worker, we just, uh, have not been able to come up with a way to find any funding for that. Um, we didn't feel at this time we could make any reductions anywhere else to, to fund it. Um, the state may come up with some safe schools money that, but it wouldn't be enough for the seventy thousand, so, um, I guess we're gonna kinda have to sit and continue on as we've been. Um, we know we have student support needs, so that's, uh, I guess there's some questions there where that's at, but, so, the one thing that for sure is our EL, we wanna adjust that a little bit and that'll be done with no costs, and we're looking for some type of, um, instructional coach, uh, but we're gonna continue to further discuss that, so I'll keep you posted on what we do there. Any questions on that piece?
I guess my, my only question was there any discussion about a secure entrance on the high school? I know that's a concern of a lot of parents and people in the community, and I think, you know, I mean, we don't have to, I mean, I just think like at least a buzzer system or some type of system, and I get that there are drawbacks to that with kids coming and going, but I still think it's important, it's something parents want, and with everything going on and nowadays, it's something that we need to look at.
And I've had people say that they would volunteer to sit at the door if it comes down to where we think we would need to hire someone full-time to just sit at the door and buzz people in, you know, if we don't have any other, I mean, just because I think it's important to people, they have said that they would...
It is important, yeah.
You know, I mean, if it comes down to that, I think, you know, you, you know, I don't know, I guess, I, I just, I'd probably have to sit in, in the, in the office and see the activity of everything to understand whether or not we would for sure need somebody full-time to, to buzz somebody in, I guess, I don't know, but it is, it's, it's been a concern, I think, of, that people have expressed to us, and I know that we are, we are looking at it, we're considering it, it's just a matter of, you know, how do you wanna go about...
When it's definitely a valid concern with everything going on, I mean, it's...
How do you go about doing it? You know, you, you don't wanna, you wanna make sure you do it right, you know?
Mm-hmm, right.
Right. That might be in another (laugh) capital at LTFM.
Yeah.
School safety also with, you know, the increase in funding, if they were to give us the forty thousand, forty thousand could probably cover the buzzer system up here, so. Um, next I have, uh, operating capital allocations. Uh, we're looking to upgrade our mower, um, mowers, going with a bigger mower, a twelve-foot mower, so we can cover more acres and try to keep up with the grass a little better in the summer. Uh, we wanna replace some tables and, uh, out here in the commons for when we have events, like we have our guests here tonight having nice, those plastic tables, and, uh, so it's just needed a little bit of an upgrade there. Uh, they are the priority, the tables, get some chairs, we might add some more. Uh, we wanna put some exterior signage out here, so when you come driving in, you know, where's guest parking, visitor parking, library, di- district office, uh, activity entrance, you know, and, uh, so just getting a little bit of that, um, so that's where that's at. Uh, we're looking to update the two thousand eight Suburban. Uh, we're going a year early with that because, um, we didn't have any curriculum, math curriculum, uh, purchased this year, but next year we were going to do that, so we figured we bump up the Suburban one year, cause next year we're gonna have a big curriculum purchase and we thought, let's maybe get this. We are gonna wait till like this time next year to try to get a twenty nineteen, so we do wanna have that spread out there. Um, and then we'll have our Suburban, two thousand eight, you can only drive those for, um, twelve years, um, so there, it's getting, be eleven years, so that's kinda what we're looking at. Uh, we're looking at adding some fireproof file cabinets in the high school for our permanent records, we do not have that. Also some fireproof, uh, cabinets for the district office for our permanent records and board minutes. Um, we have fifty thousand for site allocation, so textbooks and such that, uh, they would need at the elementary schools and middle school, high school, uh, or other types of, uh, items that they need for equipment for, in the classrooms. Uh, hand dryers, uh, expanding those, uh, baseball or tennis shed, um, got a contribution for the tennis shed, so that, that was good, so that'll help offset some of those costs. Uh, we're looking to fill in a few trees by the tennis court area. Uh, the library asked for some furniture upgrades to more modern, uh, areas for our students, uh, when they're in there during the school day, um, so we would, we couldn't quite fill their thirty thousand dollar request, but we did get fifteen thousand. Elementary getting clocks, uh, in there, uh, repairing the pole vault runway and, and actually moving that to the north end of the, um, the track area out there, so the other side of the pole vault pit, or the high jump pit. Uh, handicap door replacements, um, one at the middle school, high school north entrance, the activities entrance there. Uh, I have to put that one on capital because we don't have one over there, so you can't use LTF money, LTFM money for putting in a new handicap door. Uh, you'll see on LTFM, we wanna upgrade the other ones. And then, uh, we've got some drainage repair, um, for the high school baseball field, and those are, that's our capital allocation, so we've got that all straightened out there. Uh, long-term facility maintenance, this is probably where we could be, if the school safety with LTFM, the door buzzer system. Um, we do have a fund balance of about seventy-five thousand dollars in, in LTFM, so we could, uh, I would like to see if they do give us that, I think they're gonna give us that secure entrance stuff, and then a buzzer system would be something that we could look at, uh, putting in there. Uh, we, our needs for that was some locker replacement up here, health and safety items we do every year, um, had a boiler up here. Get sick, is that a good way to say it, Cal? Got sick, so we gotta put some money into that. Um, we also have a computer control system up here, um, that runs this whole place and it's fifteen years old and these computers just... that runs this whole place, and it's 15 years old, and these computers just need their upgrades. So. Yes, I believe it's a racket. I shouldn't say that. Bike path drainage out here, kind of out in our activities area, we got some plug drain tile or something, but we got to get better drainage out there, so. They might, I think you'd ask Jeff to, I think it is about connecting, Cal, was that connecting the drain tile that came over from across?
We're getting, we're getting more water now than we ever have before because of the tile that was put in across.
I think Jeff's talked about, can you link the two, that tile to the tile we currently have there?
Yeah.
That was kind of part of, I think, what.
North side of the bike path, we'll have to put a, an invert in there to accept that water and tie it into our tile that goes out to the water.
Yeah, you either have to put a surface inlet or, or go back farther and tie it directly in.
Yeah, see, then we'd have to go under the, I would look at the surface inlet.
Well, the, the problem with the surface inlet is any moisture, that water that comes across bike path is what turns to ice. Or if you, if you tied it in underground, you'd eliminate all them issues.
If we can do that, we have to find that at the other end of the tile where they stop it and tie it in there. And then it's that tile large enough to handle.
Well, but if you, if you put a surface inlet and theirs is dumping on the surface, you still got the same amount of water.
Yeah, but it'll, it'll get in there slower.
It can.
A little bit.
But typically, if you get a hard rain where you're going to have it coming that fast, it's.
The tile doesn't matter and the ditch fills up.
Right.
While we're fixing it.
Yep.
Chairlift replacement in the auditorium to go up to the stage is going to get repaired. Pulse and field restroom, we're going to update those, get those up to code and refreshed. Then we also have the old tennis courts. We want to crack fill and seal coat them. We've got asphalt repair and replacement, and you can tell our road has been beat up really bad, so we will be putting some money into that here this summer. That's a summer project. Been trying to put in some fill in there, but, and it's really getting beat out there pretty bad right now, so we're going to be looking at that. Support columns at Brown, that was one of the things from the LTFM study that at Brown, they had some support columns. That was one thing ISG said we should fix, so we've got that down as a summer project. And then handicap door replacement at the middle school, high school for East and West, upgrading those. They're worn out. We need new ones, so. That's our capital and LTFM allocations that we're proposing for projects. And the buzzer system, I'm hoping that if the state does give us those extra funds and we can use LTFM or either way, we can discuss putting in those buzzer systems out here. And then our technology. Our technology plan, we need to re.
I have one question on this one.
Oh, yep.
On the crack fill and seal coat, the old tennis courts, what are we going to use them for? What's?
Parking lot.
Parking lot, okay.
Yeah.
I think the band can also use them with their practicing.
Well, that's why you got to fill in. If anybody's going to be out there, because they do have, so we want to get those and put a little seal coat surface over the top so that it kind of it becomes a parking lot.
Okay.
So.
Perfect.
It's worked out really good for, when we had the section rest, like they actually filled up the whole thing, and it's been nice for snow removal to push it all the way across and to have that overflow parking, so. Technology, we need to replace the K2 iPads, kindergarten through second grade iPads. We also need to replace some of our teacher iPads. We're also looking, we've got a total there of 18,000, but we also have some teachers up here who would like Chromebooks because that's what the kids have up here, so. iPads and Chromebooks don't, aren't the same, so that made sense, so we got teachers, we'll have some dollars for, for them to, to get some Chromebooks so that they can start utilizing that a little bit better with the students. We need some Chromebooks in our elementary school, 60 at Hill, 30 at Brown, kind of in our own little cart. We need to start replacing the classroom projectors and cabling. These are getting old analog and, hey, again, it's all digital now, so this is the new digital cable. We put in one here just for this room, so there we are, upgraded. I did say that, that they do make projectors now that will have the smart board capabilities, so I would like to see us maybe looking at investing in some of those technologies also, so. That's a process that's going to be going on. We got some servers, arrow hives are wireless thing, access points that need to be replaced. A repair budget, some miscellaneous projects or innovative projects. So if things come up, we can actually have some dollars to give, to use for some of that stuff. Josh has his miscellaneous supplies, just tech stuff that he, he, he can actually, he's certified to replace the screens on iPads, and so kind of adds a repair budget too. Still debating on the iPad carts at the elementaries. Got some strips possibly, headphones in the elementaries. Got all kinds of things, and the best solution was to just, we'll just provide the headphones for all of our students instead of some of the things that we're dealing with. Does that make?
Yes.
Clear?
It was on their school supply list, so you have all range of headphones that are being sent, and earbuds don't work in little kids' ears. So.
Some are sending some really expensive headphones that are now being stolen. We had some cool things kind of on this, the line of the STEM, like the library with, you'll see coding and robotics and the virtual reality are some things that Ms. Verstig with the tech integrationists is trying to put together some things to give some more tools for the teachers to have in their classrooms. And then we want to add some FOB accesses here at the middle school, high school, and that door right there, and then Brown on the west end. When they have students out, that'd be nice to have them be able to come in there and just use the FOB. And then repairing the wireless internet out to Pulse and Field is evidently something that is broken down there, so that's our technology budget, and everything is within, actually are a little bit under in technology, so we'll. That's good.
Don't tell Josh.
He knows, actually. It's okay. Here I have some software things that I wanted to point out that we have about 80,000 budgeted for software stuff, and we've only got about 30,000 requested here, so the admin team and myself and Josh and Jackie are going to sit down and figure out who's responsible for all those other things, okay? So one of those is just AESOP, the subcalling system. Well, that should be under district office, the district's website, student information, so, I mean, we just need to have someone who's saying, okay, we got to renew these things and look over them, so. These are the budgets that we've been working on for allocations for next year, and so. Looking for your approval on.
So you need a motion?
On those budgets, yes.
General motion. So. Those, thank you, Mr. Verstig. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Botts. Any questions for Mr. yours?
Like, what if, what if I don't agree with one of the things that you're recommending? How do I need to vote?
We, we can discuss it, right?
Yeah, you can discuss it, yeah. Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm not. I agree with the mentoring program. I'm just not sure that I feel like a full-time or two full-time people are necessary for that, because I, is it really a full-time position? I, I, again, I, I agree with, with the philosophy behind it. I just feel like, I think our funds should be spent whether, to, seriously, try, I mean, I know we're in our budget trying to get an ELL teacher, but I mean, if we need to use some of those funds to try and get somebody here that's qualified, trying to get some special ed teachers that are certified, that's where I feel like our, that money should be spent. And I mean, and I, I sort of agree with like this whole thing, well, if we don't have anybody helping this person along the way and have that support, is it fair to them to put them in that position? You know, and I've, I've asked a variety of different people, well, what does our tech integrators do? What? They've gotten nothing. So I can't, I can't say that I support that position anymore until I find out, like, really what, what that whole position entails too, because I don't know that that, to me, is a, from talking with a variety of different teachers, I mean, they're, they're getting nothing from her. I mean, and so that's where I, I want it, maybe that's not a full-time position, maybe then you could have her part-time doing that and part-time doing this, like maybe you had set. That's, just knowing the budget has come up, those are just some, some discussions that I've had with a variety of people, just to see, you know, since we've had a new position, what, how, how is that working into their, into their classroom? So I guess that's just my discussion on, on that. I mean, I, I'm totally fine with everything else. I just, I just feel like that's one position that I'm just still questionable, questionable about.
I mean, I think seventy-five thousand.
I guess. I agree with the whole philosophy because I do feel like we need to support our teachers. I'm just, again, maybe need some more information on it, and, you know, are other districts feeling like they need to have that position as well in, in, in their districts? Again, I, I think that we need that support for the teachers because it's, it's a big thing coming in. Whether or not that's a full-time position, I, I don't know. Again, it's probably just more information that I, that I need probably as a board member, I guess.
It's more for the new teachers, correct? It's not for the veteran teachers who have been here, or is it?
Well, I think from my understanding.
We talked about it, we talked, it was, it's initially, you're going to start with your new teachers, but it will encompass the whole district. So it's not just strictly to the new teachers we're hiring. It will encompass and take help any of the teachers that need.
So what, what would that position do for a teacher that's been here for 10 years? What does that mentor, what would that, what would that position be? Yeah, no, please. I mean, that, like I said, I probably need more information on this.
So instead of thinking of it just as a mentor for our new staff, think of it as an instructional coach. Someone that is going to be able to work with our staff. I am one person, and Deb is one person, and we cannot help all of our staff grow at the level that they need to grow. So are they using the best instructional practices in their classroom? How can we help them get to that level? If we want our staff to grow, we have to coach them. We have two principals who are in charge of evaluating 90 staff members. And some of them three times a year if they're new. Evaluation does not equal growth in, in teachers. So we need people like myself and, and who would be under me to help our staff understand and learn how can we be the best teacher we can possibly be for our students? We're, we're in a mode of, there's not enough of us to go around. And building up a tech integrationist program needed first to have a technology district plan. And there's been a lot of work on that end, a lot of work on synergies, and so that's where her time has been spent. She hasn't been able to go out to classroom. Plus, the model has changed. We're not coming in to taking over classrooms. We're here to build capacity, and when things are offered, staff need to jump on board as well. So having an instructional coach would be more on the teacher's growth side than on the evaluative side. Because right now, that's all they're getting, is, well, this is where you need to fix. Well, how can I fix if no one's helping me and providing me with resources and training and things? So, and we have a lot of information from the new teacher center. A lot of our school districts around us, like Marshall has instructional coaches. Worthington has instructional coaches. They are there to build our staff. It's kind of, you know, yeah, we can provide staff development, but is that what each staff member needs? How can we get down to what, what Wendy needs and what Katie needs and what Randy needs, rather than, okay, we're all going to worry about this now? Well, how does that meet the needs of that individual teacher's classroom? And where they're at in their growth cycle? You know, we, teachers kind of get a bad rep sometimes because, yep, you went to college and you got your degree and you're teaching, and you close your door and you teach. Those days are done. We need to grow every day in whatever way possible, and if we can encourage that growth, it will help our students' achievement in the long run.
I, I think we should give you more information, lay that out for, for.
I know, that was one of the things that stood out to me too. I mean, I, last year we put the tech integrationist, we brought Melanie on board, and I think they've been great hires, but it's to the point where I haven't seen, you know, you don't see as much for these kind of positions, $75,000, I just don't feel like we've seen what's, what they're doing, or what, you know, I mean, we, we hear from Melanie here at the, here at the board meeting, and that's, she does an awesome job. I don't know what Deb Verstig does as a whole, I mean, you know, or what she's doing, or what, I'll, you know.
And I think that's probably hearing, you know, some of the teachers, you know, that have just said, you know, they were looking at, you know, who they had. Last year, Kara, she came in and she maybe took over a little section, or she said, here, do this. So I think they were maybe looking at a little bit more direction from, from Deb on that end, but maybe that was just a misunderstanding on their end, what her role was going to be. I mean, I get, you know, she developed this policy and, and that's good. I just, you know, again, I just want, I, I, again, I want to, I want to see that we're making the, the right decisions and spending the money in the right areas, and I trust, you know, that you guys know what we need, but I, I just, I didn't feel right if I didn't voice my concern on, on wondering what that is, because, you know, it, it's, it's been eating at me for a couple of months, and I, because I know that this has been a discussion, and, and so that's why I've been trying to gather some information, talking to a variety of different teachers in the different schools and just asking, you know, what their thoughts are on that.
And maybe more.
Yeah, no, I was just saying, they, you know, they just haven't seen it on their end, what they probably thought she was going to be, I guess. And maybe that's going to come, you know, develop over time.
Yeah, right, right, right. We came in with a drop-in person, and now we have someone here who has built a, a lot of policy and making sure that we have what we need and budgeting and, you know, all of these technology requests, that all came from Deb. You know, where we did a lot of research with our staff on the need of Chromebooks and the need of headphones and what they, what they need in their classrooms for space as far as having charging stations, because they're unacceptable right now. They're on the floor and, you know, trying to get at what are the teachers' needs so that technology can be seamlessly integrated. I mean, for kids to get an iPad right now out of a charging station, it sucks up so much instructional time. So we are looking at products, Deb's looking at products and sharing them with us to figure out, okay, how can we get the product, get the tool to the kid without taking so much instructional time away from what's happening? And right now, we have kids who are in first grade, and it's their responsibility that their iPad is charged. I don't agree with that. I mean, that, it is a tool, it needs to be charged and ready when the teacher needs it. That's part of the teacher to help them understand this is what we do with our iPads at night, this is what we do with them in the morning. And it's, looking at a system is a lot of work to figure out where can we go, what do we need, and how can we accomplish what's best for students?
Mel, I think you said that Marshall has an instructional coach, you know, different.
Worthington does, yeah.
Worthington, maybe possibly a, a job description of some kind, so you kind of.
Right. I mean, you know, just, again, I, I completely agree with, you know, that we need to support our teachers, I really do. I, I just was curious as to, is it something that's really a full-time job? And again, just, I, just probably, yeah. More information as to really what, what they are, and I, I get now what you're, you're saying. You know, I just want to make sure, okay, well, so you're asking for potentially two, you know?
I, I appreciate the question, Ms. Tovard. I think, you know, we live this, so we kind of got our picture.
Yeah, yeah.
If we have to explain this better to people, then I, I have no problem with that.
Right, right, yeah. I mean, I, yeah.
We'll bring this out. We'll talk about the new teacher center program, what these people would be doing, how it would look when they go out into classrooms and all of those things.
Yeah.
I, I think, I appreciate just, we, we're not. I, I think, I appreciate just, we, we're not explaining.
I didn't, you know, when I looked at this on the agenda, I didn't know we were like gonna be doing a motion, I thought it was just gonna be something. So then that's why I kind of got concerned going, hi, I got a question on this, well, how am I gonna vote?
And we, and we have it in there, but we're still working on, you know, will we have the training needed?
Right.
You know, with, with the service co-op and how many, I, we, we're still up in the air a little bit on some of that stuff, so that's why we're kind of dragging our feet, it's there, but we haven't necessarily made any decisions. We're not gonna go out next week and post for anything.
Right, right.
I, I will come back in April with more information and we'll talk more about it, if that's okay.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, that's fine, I mean, I.
To do that piece, the, the instructional coaching piece in our recommendation.
When you do get information, Kevin, see how the senior staff is utilizing or how they're, how they're interacting with the senior staff as well. Not just the, yeah, not just the new incoming.
Or the assistant, or veteran.
Oh, sure.
Your veteran teachers and, cause yeah, we're, there's a lot of new stuff that's coming through the pipeline, especially tech and, and that way that, you know, you get a senior teacher that some jump in head first and the next one won't touch it.
And again, this all comes under goal number one, improving student achievement.
Right.
And if you look, remember the sub-goals, it was to enhance and, and improve teacher performance. So, I mean, it was also about giving them more tools and more skills to be more effective in the classroom, so. Will we have, will you see the impact of Miss Wellness or anyone's? I mean, this is going to take some time.
Right, right.
I mean, I explained to someone that, you know, we know that if a kid is ready for kindergarten, they got a really good chance of being, reading at grade level by third grade. Well, we're just, this is our first year preschool, you know, of stuff that we've been really trying to, to get all of them in there. When are we gonna see the result? It won't be for four years until the MCA's come out. I mean, that's the visible, I would hope we're gonna know more in the meantime, but this stuff is, systems change and takes, this is slow. This is, to see something happen tomorrow or next year, that's, it's a little bit harder and maybe we need to communicate better with the staff too on these things, so.
Well, it's gonna be something that we're gonna have to answer questions to people in the community too, cause they're gonna wanna know what this new person's doing, why we feel it's important. You know, I mean, cause we're asking them for a bond and they're gonna say, well, what do you, why are we hiring this new person? I mean, we need to have those answers, I feel like everyone needs to have those answers, how to answer those questions.
Right.
So, with the motion, we already approved and seconded, didn't we, Deb?
No.
No?
No.
I'm just telling you, we're just gonna talk about it?
No.
So you're maybe wanting a motion for that with everything that's on there except pulling off.
More information on the instructional coaching piece, yep.
Making it difficult, sorry.
No, you're not, you're entitled to that.
I agree with you.
Glad you said something.
I just want more, yeah. Like I said, it's probably just that I need just more information on it, that it's not that I'm like completely against it, so.
You wanna make an informed decision?
Yes.
Actually, there was a first and a second.
Yeah, and so. Yeah, cause then I asked, yeah.
It's okay, so we have to amend it and then restate it or amend the motion?
They just recommended to approve the administration budget recommendations.
So we would amend that and say approve the administration budget recommendations except for the instructional coach, so they can bring more information back for that. That's the amendment.
Right.
You can amend the amend if you want.
Yeah.
And that was a motion, right? So then we need.
So do I need a motion on that?
Tammy made that amended motion?
Sure.
Yeah.
So you're making the.
The amended motion, yes.
I second it.
And Katie seconds it.
Okay, so that's except for the instructional coach?
Instructional, yeah. The new teacher mentor induction to support instructional, instructional coach. Very good. Nothing wrong with wanting to make an informed decision. All right.
Any other discussion?
Don't be changing it. All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, will you repeat it, Deb, please?
Um, well, the original motion was Randy. And Jeff seconded to approve the administration budget recommendations. And then Tammy with Katie seconded to amend the motion except for the instructional coach. And I have the new teacher mentor, so it's up for the new teacher mentor instructional coach, is that correct? Is that what you're called?
Yes, yeah. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. The amended motion passes, thank you.
Are we on eight, seven? Eight, seven.
We have a records retention schedule we need to have, Deb, when was?
Nineteen eighty seven was the last time.
And it is, this document has all of the records, the state law for how long records have to be retained and so. We, I recommend we just accept this and get this updated. We're gonna be doing some work this summer in, I know, the district office records room. We've got pallets of stuff in the shed and I think we're gonna get a big shredder truck that we gotta go through and so that's where this all came up, of how long do we have to keep some of these things? And a lot of them are six years, some are permanent, so we're actually looking at taking the board minutes from all the years and get them out of binders and put them in nice book things or, so it'll be organized and. Cause it's, I can't take you in there right now, it wouldn't be right. We'll find it, but.
Yeah.
Deb needs to have someone go in with her, cause she has to climb ladders and stand on one leg when she's pulling that one.
She may not come back out.
Yeah, so, anyway, I, this is just one of those things that I just thought we should upgrade to two thousand eighteen. How's that?
Yes. So I have a motion to adopt the school district general records retention schedule.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Taubert, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman, any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the school district general records retention schedule signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight, eight, approve policy five through three wellness, this is an addition.
Wellness policy, we need to have upgraded because of some state requirements that are, and it's been a discussion that's actually been on the table since last spring, I believe. The policy committee met with the wellness committee and the issue came down to, there was, um, having, like the dairy council brought, handed out ice cream bars and there was, these policies can give it a little bit restrictive and we, board kind of was like, you know, we, we wanna be able to open those one time things up. They, they don't happen all the time. You know, the French club makes crepes and, you know, and our food service and our school store have got everything pretty much in compliance. And this policy, as we've put it together, it's the MSBA one, and we've double checked and we're okay allowing things like the ice cream bars and, and those one time events and I think there's some fundraisers that, you know, do a sucker or something on Valentine's Day, you know, would fit in, cause there's so much sugar, but it's like, come on, it's, it's a tradition, it's been around for a long time. So I think the policy committee, we've, we've gone through and, and we met with Janet Bush who took us through and basically said, this policy is okay and will meet the needs for us and for the state, so I recommend approval of the wellness policy.
I have a motion to approve the policy five through three.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Botts, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman, any other discussion or questions? Any other questions? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving policy five through three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Wees, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Taubert, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, we are adjourned.
All right.